Ms. Devine.
Here.
Ms. Maya. Ms. McColsky.
Here.
Ms. Seltzer.
Here.
Ms. Sherman. Ms. Zimiyuski?
Here.
Mr. McMillan.
Here.
Mr. Dilkes.
Here.
Mr. Chu.
Here.
We have a question.
Okay, there is no executive session at this time. The agenda mentions a presentation, but that was actually done last week during our special board meeting last week, so no presentation today. We also don't have a committee of the whole, because I think we're just going to talk about everything during the actual buildings and grounds section. So we'll move on to section five, public comment. And so, you know, the purpose for public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. Additional more general comments may be made later in the meeting. I think seeing as everyone in this audience has been here before for public comments, I think I'll skip the rest of the explanation. But if, in fairness to all who wish to speak, there's a strict three-minute time limit per person during public comment. And Mr. Burns, if you can help me keep time, that would be appreciated. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. And so, public comments. All right, seeing as there are none, we will move on to item number six, Buildings, Grounds and Finance Committee. I will present this. So the Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders and warrants on a monthly basis. The committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside providers, service providers, and oversees all maintenance capital improvement projects district-wide. There is only one item on this agenda for today for approval, and that's 6.02, the submission of the 2025-2026 budget to New Jersey Department of Education. So I'll read this and then explain what it is. So, motion to authorize submission of the 2025-26 budget to New Jersey Department of Education. Be it resolved that the Council Board of Education approve 2025-2026 school district budget as follows. There's a table, and basically the budget is, the general fund is $42,816,458. Special revenue fund is $6,236,328. Debt service fund is $1,286,163. And the total base budget at that point is $50,338,949. Local tax levy for the general fund is $19,864,812. Then for the local tax levy for debt service fund is the exact same amount as the debt service fund, which is $1,286,000 and then $163,000. And so the total base budgets, the total local tax levy is $21,150,975. So then be it further resolved to seek approval for the applicable tax levy caps, healthcare adjustment of $724,469. Be it further resolved to use the bank cap as applicable, zero dollars, there is no bank cap. Use of bank cap is to maintain current programming that cannot be deferred or incrementally completed over a long period of time. Cuts in state aid make use of bank cap necessary to maintain programs. Again, there is no bank cap. Be it further resolved to withdraw funds from capital reserve in the amount of $376,620. Purpose of the withdrawal is to address the emergent masonry repairs needed to the Coningswood High School gymnasium entrance. Be it further resolved to withdraw funds from the maintenance reserve in the amount of $150,000. Withdraw from the maintenance reserve account for use on required maintenance activities for a school facility as reported in the comprehensive maintenance plan pursuant to NJAC 6A:26-20.5. Be it further resolved to withdraw funds from the tuition reserve in amount of zero dollars. Be it further resolved that pursuant to NJAC 6A:23A-7.3, the Council Board of Education establishes $25,000 as the allotted maximum expenditure for travel for 2024-2025 and 2025-2026 school years. Whereas the Council Board of Education recognizes school staff and board members will incur travel expenses related to and within the scope of the current responsibilities and for travel that promotes the delivery of instruction or furthers the efficient operation of the school district. And whereas NJAC 6A:23A-7.3, Seculay, requires board members to receive approval of these expenses by a majority of the full voting membership of the board and staff members to receive prior approval of the expenses by the superintendent of schools and a majority of the full voting membership of the board. And to date thus far in the 2024-2025 school year, the Council Board of Education has spent $4,101 on travel. And to advertise said tentative budget in the retrospect in accordance with the form required by the State Department of Education and according to law. And be it further resolved that a public hearing be held at the Council Board of Education located at Coningswood High School on Monday, April 28, 2025, at 6:30 PM for the purpose of conducting a public hearing on the budget for 2025-2026 school year. So that is the resolution to submit the tentative 2025-26 budget to the County Executive Superintendent of Schools, which is the county representative of the New Jersey Department of Education, for them to review and approve prior to the submission of the completed and full budget that we will be looking at do hopefully on April 28, that, the April regular board meeting where that will also be the public hearing on the budget. So, with that being said, I'm seeking approval of item 6.02. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and so at this point, questions or comments from board members?
So I just was going to ask you to clarify. I know that there are not many people in the public here right now, but just for people that are watching, the differences between the special revenue fund, the debt service fund and all that, just so everybody understands.
So Fund 40 is debt service. That is basically what we've bonded over the years. So let's say we had a referendum, let's say we had a referendum that's passed, it was approved. If we approved that, that'd be placed on Fund 40 potentially, or it's where your debt is, it's where bonds are. So we still have some bonds that are, you know, that we're paying off every year, so that money is coming from that. Fund 20 is grants, so it's not, it's not the operating budget. Yes, it's obviously used for the operating of our school district, such through preschool and some other things, but it's not technically considered the general operation of the district. Fund 10 is what we're talking about in general, when we talk about approving this budget. Because that's the part that, that's the bulk of it, that is the meat of the budget. That's where we function off of. Does that make sense?
And to clarify, the debt services for the 2005 referendum, I believe.
I have something. So in terms of the procedure here going forward, so this was the result, this budget was the result of collaboration between you and Ms. Coleman and Borough people. Can you just give me a sense of, is the collaboration with the Borough going to be ongoing for the remainder of the time up until the April meeting? If you just give us a sense of what that's going to look like.
So yes, so per the partnership, the next step, which will happen next week, is that our chief financial officer and our financial team will sit down and review the full details of the budget with the Borough Chief Financial Officer and their financial team in order to make sure that the, there is clarity on the direct payment to fill and close the gap beyond the $754,000 that was previously promised using surplus and pilot money. And so the original ask was $3 million. And so the due diligence on both parties is to determine, is the full $3 million needed or is it less? And so they'll go through, analyze the budget, and will only be putting forward what is required to close that gap. And so that process takes place next week.
And considering that this is, the Borough has said that it would collaborate on the full amount of the ask, can we assume that programming, staffing will remain as it is currently?
No. And so I think I want to be very clear. And so the partnership was to close the budget deficit and to avoid unnecessary layoffs. It does not mean that programmatic changes will not be taking place. Schools will be making programmatic changes based on a whole host of things, many of which are going to be driven by student needs, student demand. Others will be driven by long-term planning. And so the budget reconciliation process takes place between now and April 21st, when we actually sit down with the board to actually review any potential changes. There's, there are no changes that are pressing at the moment because we want to make sure that the funding is in place so that we know exactly what we're working with. And so the goal of the partnership was to avoid crippling and dramatic reductions to program services and personnel. And so once that process is complete and we have secured that, then we will know how to effectively plan. And in parallel to that process, schools are looking at their programming needs for '25, '26, and they're going to make adjustments accordingly. And so there's a lot of moving parts that will take place over the next three to four weeks.
I have a question about, in here it says that we're going to advertise a tentative budget in the retrospect. Does that mean that what we received today is going to be, or not today, but what we received, is that going to be public? Or what does, I guess maybe just explain that if not. It says advertise and tentative, said tentative budget in the retrospect.
What happens is, what happens is the, this budget tomorrow will be submitted to the county. The county superintendent and the business administrator will then ask questions, say yes or no, and they'll eventually give the approval. That budget then gets given back to us. We then have to take that, take the budget, which basically is what we submitted. There'd be an advertisement which will send to the retrospect. It will be this, this budget, does not mean there won't be any changes and things of that, that nature, but it'll be the budget as submitted to the county. And then after, then we have our final adoption. At that point, we can make any changes that we were going to make, and that'll be resubmitted to the county for final approval. Does that make sense?
I have another question, but it's more about some of the items in here. Is that okay to ask at this point? So one of my questions is, there is less money in here for some salaries. Again, I might not be reading this correctly, but I thought the idea of partnering with the Borough was to not get rid of staff members, and it looks like we are decreasing some of those proposed amounts in here, so.
When we initially proposed the budget last week, there was obviously significant cuts to staffing. Those cuts were placed back in. The deficits could be for multiple reasons. We've had changing, changing of staffs. I don't know without going through each and every line. I can tell you there could be breakage, there could be different things going on. Even the cuts from this year that were made for this, this school year's budget. When we did that last year, it was a generic cut. So when we actually hit the effective lines, it may have hit differently than was actually planned for. So there were some discrepancies you're seeing, but everything that was put, everything from last week was put back in, to my knowledge.
So I, you know, I also want to clarify, so I did ask Ms. Coleman about this, and one of the reasons is that there are retirements, right? And so when you have staff that retire, in almost every single case, the replacement staff will be paid at a lower, right? Even if they're the same step because of, say longevity bonus or so forth. So that's one of the things that we need to keep in mind. I think what's really important for us to keep in mind too is that what's happened in this budget is that all of the cuts that we discussed, that the Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee and that all the board members got the notes on, were added back in, right? And so the idea is that we are, I think Dr. McDowell just talked about, we're not, we don't have to, we're not being forced to make any cuts anymore. And so, so what we're seeing here is basically all those cuts being added back in. And so whatever the line items are that we're looking at, that is representative of that. And I don't know that any of us, other than, say, Mr. Burns or Dr. McDowell or Ms. Coleman know actually, you know, how it's supposed to shake out there because it's, you know, it's not really our job necessarily.
Just to add, if there were any reductions, it would be based on what Dr. McDowell already said, and that would be a decision programmatically that would potentially, but there's nothing planned at this time.
I have one more question. The budget that is here that has been proposed, I know we can't talk about CA negotiations, but what is there, the increase of some sort in this budget to cover whatever we might finalize on?
So as I think Dr. McDowell and Ms. Coleman have said repeatedly, the raises for, the anticipated raises for staff, right? Because it's not just the CA, but also the CPSA are included within the budget. So the money is there for the anticipated raises.
Is any allowance, considering that the fact-finding process will be beginning within a few weeks, I'm assuming that that process will not be done by the April meeting? So what, exactly right, so what kind of contingency or, you know, any kind of, considering we have to pass the budget before that process is over, I guess I just want to know how that would, that would wind up panning out. Consider, you know, if there was any kind of a settlement, that perhaps would be more than perhaps what we have currently budgeted.
For the sake of negotiations, I want to answer that specifically, but I would tell you that the same process we would have used last year would have been used this year to budget. Meaning, sure, we didn't have a contract, so we obviously had to project it into the contract or into the budget. That same process would work this year as well. So I don't want, I won't go into any details in that, but I think that's a fair answer.
Now, I'll decide on which is, any single budget, right, is a, is a balance of choices, right? And so if, you know, if one place, if the costs in one area increase, right, then the cost in some other area has to decrease. And so whatever ends up happening, right? For example, for our transportation, it's been, it's been going up, and I think that's something that we'll be seeing next week is approving a transfer to, for more transportation money because we have to, those costs keep on increasing on us, right? And that requires taking money from somewhere else. So as with anything, if one area cost increases, we have to take it from somewhere else.
So I just have one comment. I just wanted to reiterate that I sent an email to some of you this afternoon. I'm not going to ask any of those questions publicly, but I just wanted to acknowledge, make sure you got it, and hopefully I can get some clarification on some of those things, but I'm prepared for it tonight.
I did see the email as of around six o'clock tonight, to be honest. I, I, or Ms. Coleman will respond. I knew some of the answers off the top of my head, but I could not answer all those questions.
Can I, I'm sorry, I was thinking about last year. So if I recall, so last year we approved the preliminary budget, and as, then as the weeks progressed, there had to be many heartbreaking layoffs and rifts, as we all remember. When the, when we were ready to vote on the final, I remember being, being told that we were voting on the staffing for the following year. So we weren't voting, I'm just making sure I remember this correctly. So, right, so we were voting on the staffing for the following year, not necessarily voting on the process or the choices or anything like that. Can you just give us a sense, are we going to be able to see the budget when it's ready? Which I know is going to be a process. Are we going to be able to see it and be able to have an opportunity to ask line item questions and vote on the budget when it is finished? Or is it going to be a situation where we're voting on the staffing for the following year again? Because I just remember being a little bit confused by the process last year, and I just wondered if I could just have, you know, some clarification, because I know last year was very crazy.
So let me, I think, address, address the budget process because I do think that it is a confusing process, and, you know, that's, that's why I sent that committee email with the process laid out. This, what we're doing right here is the, kind of the first step in the budget process, which is to submit this tentative balanced budget to the Department of Education representatives at the county level for them to go through.
Absolutely, I was talking about the future.
Now, through, through then that, that, through that approval process, right? The school administration is going to work to finalize the pieces that, and how the budget needs to lay out or any, you know, programmatic changes that need to happen for, for next year, until we get basically to the point where those changes are done, and then that will be presented to the Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee, and then all, all board members will get those notes about what choices were made and how, what steps were taken to maintain a balanced budget and to appropriately run the schools and implement whatever programmatic changes that the administration sees as beneficial for the students and for the schools. I think our job as, as, and I think what's confusing and what's difficult for board members is to understand what our job is as board members in this process, right? And our job is to understand those steps being taken, right? And those decisions, those decisions being made. That is, I think, very different than asking, you know, Ms. Coleman or Mr. Burns every single line item within the budget. And I think we have to be careful there between understanding that our job is to understand the steps that are being taken to, to maintain a balanced budget, to improve academics, to make sure the, the schools are doing the best job they can versus micromanaging our financial professionals within, within the district. And one of those things is when, when, for example, when Dr. McDowell and Ms. Coleman have said all of the cuts have been added back in, right? Then what they've said is, is what they're doing. Our job isn't necessarily to say, micromanage and say, you know, how exactly, you know, what number are you putting in what cell, and what does this mean? It's to say, okay, that step of putting all the cuts back in, that makes sense to us, and, and we're approving those steps. And I think we have to be very careful about not micromanaging the staff at the school, but making sure that we're, we're, we're understanding what's happening versus saying, this specific method that you're using within the line item to achieve that goal, you know, I don't necessarily understand, and, or you should do something different there. Does that make sense?
I think you're misinterpreting what I'm asking. So I don't think that asking questions as a board member is micromanaging, right? So one of the few things that we are commissioned to do is to understand the budget and then vote on it. So I just think, I was just asking what the process is so that we can understand. Because if we're being asked to put our name in affirmation for a budget, I think it's reasonable that we should understand what's in the budget. I don't think it's micromanaging to ask those questions. I mean, asking questions is really the only thing we can do as board members, right? So I don't, I don't like the term "micromanaging", I don't think that's fair, you know, just making sure we understand, right?
And that's, that's why the, us, what, what we need to make sure we understand is the steps being taken to maintain the balanced budget and to push forth the programming of the schools, right? And so what I'm trying to say is, when we look at line items and we, you know, the, the step that is being taken might be distributed across 50 different line items, right? That's not something that, that really is our job to, to say dig into because that's the administration of the schools. Our job is to understand what steps are being taken, right? What that, that impact is, and to, and to approve or not approve the budget at large. But then to go in and say, hey, you know, tell us all the 50 different line items and how they've shifted because of these general steps that we're, we're taking. That's where I'm getting concerned that we're going to end up basically wasting a lot of time at the administrative level when they need to be making sure that, that, that they have enough time to implement all of the steps that are, that need to be taken to make sure the schools are, are running well.
So I'm going to ask a point of clarification. On April 28th, we're going to approve a budget. And between now and then, we will have Finance Committee, there will be internal understanding of, here's what I need, right? I may not have two fifth grades, I may have two kindergartens, I may have this, right? All of those shifts are going to happen. We are going to have clarity into a summary, summation similar to what was submitted. Here's what's been changed, if anything at all. We will see that, should there be something that pops out to us, we can ask that question just so we understand what the line means, right? I think it is prudent to ask, hey, well, this looks lower. Well, the lower made a lot of sense when you said, hey, by the way, retirements change that number, just straightforward. We will have that time in the next month to make sure that everyone feels, understands enough beyond the high-level summary in the agenda, I think is what I want to make sure I'm clear on. Like, we're going to see more than necessarily the summary here to help inform the vote on the 28th. I think is what we're, and, and just making sure that I'm clear.
Yes, let me, let me, let me add an additional layer. And so because of the sophistication of the budget, we will not be exclusively only talking with Finance Committee. Because of the, the scope and scale, we also will be doing a very similar deeper dive with Curriculum Committee and a deeper dive with Personnel. Not so much Policy, sorry, Policy Committee. But we'll be doing that with all three of the major committees because the budget touches on all three of those. And so I think that that level of, the detail and the clarity that you're looking for will be, the committee meetings that will be coming up, and then the preemptive summaries going into those meetings will provide a degree of clarity that's not present in this, in this current summary. And so that, that's, that's our plan. Those meetings will be much longer, hour to an hour and a half, and, and they will be forthcoming for, for, for April committees.
So thank you for explaining that because, I mean, as a new board member, I might understand the process, but if I am going to vote on something, I'm going to want an idea of what I'm voting on. So, Mr. Burns, thank you for answering my questions. I'm not attempting to micromanage anybody. But if I'm voting on something and I don't understand it and it's not clear, then I'm going to ask a million questions. So I don't want to waste your time, Mr. Burns. I definitely don't want to waste Ms. Coleman's time either. But if I'm saying, if I'm asked to say yes or no, it needs to be, you know, I need to understand what I'm voting for. So thank you for answering my questions earlier, and thank you, Dr. McDowell, for explaining that.
Yeah, the process, I mean, our, my goal is never to micromanage either, but it is helpful to understand, especially given, you know, coming into year one, we were in a one and a half million dollar shortfall, and we just voted on a number. And then the second year, it was kind of the same thing. This year, we were able to get a lot more details, and that was really helpful. But given that that's new, we, I wanted to get clarification on some of those things. And it, it was just a simple email of, hey, can I get clarification on this? Not like, what exactly are you doing for this or that, or trying to micromanage or get more specifics? Just an overall better understanding of what I'm looking at.
I also think it's important to understand that the budget you're seeing today is not the budget we had a week ago. And the level of detail in the work and the stress from the last week, I don't think anyone understands outside of BAs in this state. We're also dealing with unprecedented times. In my career as a teacher, BA, whatever, I've never seen a time like this. So what you're seeing today is what we did in a week. As Dr. McDowell said, you'll have Finance Committee meetings, and obviously you'll have a chance to ask more questions and dig deeper into this budget. If changes are made, we'll update it. But I think it's important to realize that we had to reverse three and a half million dollars worth of cuts. That was not an easy task. Just one spreadsheet alone took me a day and a half. So I just want, I just think it's important to realize that, I understand this may feel rushed, we felt rushed too. We can understand that.
I think I speak for all of us when I say we very much appreciate all the hard work that you guys have put into this immensely, yeah.
So just want to make sure that everyone has the information that they need. And so I think that the way that we need to look at budget, we need to look at it in two realms. There's the technical piece, which we leave to the financial professionals, and then there's the adaptive piece. And I think that a better place for board members to, to swim is in the adaptive piece. And that's where Meredith and, and I actually turn line items on a spreadsheet into real things, real people. And so our conversations will, in, in the coming weeks, will not be about a 98-page document. It'll be about what's actually happening in schools with programming, with kids, with our staff. It'll be about what's actually happening in schools with programming, with kids, with our staff. And those are much more, more meaningful conversations. And so that's, that's what we're going to be trying to make sure that we do while our, the technicians are doing the 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 technical aspect of making the numbers make sense. My responsibility will be to actually make those numbers real. We can talk about a line item, or we can talk about 22 people. I'd rather talk about 22 people than the line item. Sorry, Steve.
Yeah, and Dr. McDowell, thank you for, I think you you explained it a lot better than than I did, which is that that is, I think, the level which should be probably the most meaningful for board members, right? Because we are not technical school finance experts, but to under, you know, but to talk about what the real impact of those line items are rather than the line items themselves, I think is where, I think, probably most meaningful for all of us. And then also, you know, we'll make sure, because a lot of these discussions are happening, you know, during different committees, you know, we've had, have had the the practice of making committee notes for a year or two, two years or so now. And so we'll make sure that that those are sent out so that everyone has a chance to 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 review those and and ask questions as well.
Sure, and I appreciate that. And my questions were really based on, I understand that this is a line item, but I want to know what the impact of that line item is going to be behind it, you know, because I'm not, I'm not a numbers person either, so, yeah.
And I, I think I'll add one more thing, which is I, I do also appreciate the engagement of of the entire board. You know, I think looking around at different boards throughout the state, I I think you you would see a different level of engagements from the full board. And so I do also want to say personally, from my perspective, I definitely appreciate the engagement from from the full board. Any other questions or comments? Awesome. Roll call, please, Mr. Burns.
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Devine?
Yes.
Ms. Maya?
Yes.
Ms. McColsky?
Yes.
Ms. Seltzer?
Yes.
Ms. Zee? Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Dukas?
Yes.
And Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on then to Section 7, Discussion, Public Participation. This is the second section for public comments. This section is for additional, more general comments. Doesn't have to be on items on the agenda. I believe, looking around here, everyone's been to a board meeting before, so I I won't go through the the whole comment here, but again, in fairness to all who wish to speak, there is a strict three-minute time limit per person during public comment. And if Mr. Burns could help me by keeping that that time, I'd appreciate that. So please remember to state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing as there are no public comments, oh, oh, here you go.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Mike Pallucci. I teach here in the district, and I am a resident, 357 Park Avenue. Thank you for the collaborative efforts of everybody. I know that this is a really tough time, and I know that it hasn't been easy across the state and especially here in Collingswood. As Vice President and Representative of the Collingswood Education Association, I feel it would just be incumbent upon me to remind everyone, and I I do sincerely believe that you are trying, but I think that's what some of the questions we're getting at earlier from the various board members. I would just please continue to urge you to not make staff cuts as much as possible. You know, keep in mind, from our perspective in the district as employees, this is really like the third year in a row where we're facing this, and we are operating, as you guys know, on a relative skeleton crew in in many of our buildings. And these are the people, this is, you know, the people that teach our kids are the biggest investment that we make, you know? And so I think if, you know, just to redouble our efforts, I do appreciate again what everyone's doing, but just to remind everyone, as a representative of the staff, to do everything that we can to make sure that we're not cutting staff members. All right, thanks a lot.
Okay, seeing as there are no more public comments, with that, we will move to Section 8, Agreement. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, thank you. Have a good night.